Welcome. Today is February 4th, 2025. It is 5:30 and we are in the Ed Bosch Freilich Meeting Room in Mandan City Hall. Mr. Newbauer, would you please take the roll?
Commissioners, Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Here.
Schoburg.
Heinzchen.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. What stands for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Andrew, would you lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Andrew. We'll start off with announcements. We have the Beautification Recognition Program. Carrie Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The Community Beautification Committee met on December 12th and voted unanimously to recognize the Google property at 212 Ninth Avenue Northwest for their appealing attention-getting outdoor Halloween display. I've got it pulled up on the screen here. The neighbor who nominated the property shared that Gary and Sandra have been entertaining the community with their elaborate Halloween decorations for more than 17 years. Each year, the display has expanded incorporating animatronics, eerie displays, lighting effects, and entertainment. The spooky spectacle has turned into a destination spot on Halloween night, drawing in over 300 children annually. It has brought joy to the neighborhood and is something worth celebrating. Go through a couple more pictures here. Definitely quite the display. I can see why people want to stop here every year. And I would just have a certificate that I would like to present to the Googles on behalf of the City Commission and the Community Beautification Committee.
Congratulations.
And we will grab a picture in just a second, but just a reminder, the Beautification Recognition Program is open year-round. Residential and commercial properties are eligible and nominations can be submitted at any time. There's information on the city's website,
Carrie, do you want us to just stay sitting or...
I think I'm just standing and gathering.
Okay. Congratulations.
So how does it survive the North Corwind?
Sometimes it's difficult.
Second announcement pertains to the Homestead, 2025 Homestead Veterans and Primary Residence Credit Program. Kimberly.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to take a couple minutes tonight to make sure that our, the public and our taxpayers are aware of the property tax credit programs, which can help lower their tax bills. The first one I want to talk about tonight is the Homestead Credit. This credit is if you are 65 years or older or permanently and totally disabled, you must reside on the property for which the credit is claimed as of the assessment date, which would be February 1st, and have an interest in that property. The total income of the applicant plus the spouse and any dependents, and then you can subtract from that your out-of-pocket medical expenses, and if you do not exceed the $70,000 for that calendar year, then you would qualify for this program. And if you have any questions or information, just make sure to call your local assessing office. The second program that I'd like to visit with you about is the Disabled Veterans Credit. That is for veterans or surviving spouses of a disabled veteran with an Armed Forces Service connected disability of 50% or greater, and you have to have an honorable discharge. The veteran or surviving spouse must own and occupy the property of the assessment date, which is February 1st. Again, you can call your local assessing office for any information, or we can help you fill out those forms. The third program is the Primary Residence Credit, which was created in the 2023 Legislative Session. This provides up to a $500 credit off of your property tax bill. The applicant must own a home in North Dakota and reside in it as your primary residence credit. There's no age restriction and just one primary residence credit per household. And you have to apply for that one online, and you have to do that by March 31st. And a person can qualify for more than one of these programs, so you could qualify for possibly all three of these programs. So if you have any questions, please, like I said, call your local assessing office, and we're more than willing to help you with any of these programs. And I'd stand by for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Kimberly?
No questions, Kimberly, but I have a comment. I'm very proud and pleased to be part of Mandan that offers this program to our...
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Commissioners, you have the agenda in front of you. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Roar.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. You also have the minutes from the January 21st Regular City Commission Meeting. Looking for a motion for approval.
I move to approve the January 21st Regular Meeting Note.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes.
I move to approve the January 28th Minutes.
Second.
A motion to approve the January 28th, 2025 Special Meeting Working Session. Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no public hearings tonight, nor bids. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items you would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Could I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Commissioner Roar? Good? Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no old business, so on to new business. Consider Hydro-Instrument Soul Source Justification Letter, Jerick.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Before you today, I have a couple of items related to the Water Treatment Plant Phase 3 Optimization Project. The item here is your consideration of a Soul Source letter that we would provide to the NDEQ, and that would be requesting approval to Soul Source chlorine feed equipment. We're requesting Soul sourcing this equipment because it would tie into our existing equipment, and it would provide operational continuity and maintenance familiarity. The total cost for the unit that we're requesting to Soul Source is anticipated to be between $20,000 and $25,000 on a $12.5 million project, so this would represent less than half a percent of the overall project cost. If you have any questions, I could answer them. Also, we have Tyler Fode from AE2S available to answer questions, but it would be our recommendation to approve as presented.
Jerick, this is for which location? This is, you probably said it, is this the freshwater intake, the...
Correct, yeah. This would be for our Water Treatment Plant Phase 3 Optimization Project, yep.
I think you said that.
I know, I'm sorry.
Any further questions for Jerick?
What, which GPO does this fall under? Do you know?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
What purchasing program does this one fall under?
This would be, I think that we would want to provide this Soul Source letter for the SRF loan that would be, we would be taking out for the, that we are basing our utility rate adjustment on.
Well, I just, sometimes we see, you know, it's a Soul Source, but is it under a GPO price, I guess? Is it a negotiated price with a...
This, it would be, it would be, it would be negotiated with the manufacturer, and I'm sure that there's, maybe Tyler would be able to expand on that process a little bit better than I would.
Yeah, we would just negotiate with the manufacturer.
Directly.
Pre-negotiate that price, and then include that in so that contractors would put that price.
Understood, thank you.
Any further questions? Entertainer motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Second.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Roar.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number two under new business, consider a 2025 Budget Amendment for the Information Technology. Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor Freilich and Commissioners. I'm here to request your consideration of a proposed budget amendment within the IT Department. The IT Department has faced staffing challenges and have delayed essential maintenance and updates. There's a significant backlog of tasks that need attention to ensure systems functionality. The city relies on outdated technology that hinders productivity. Many devices are old and prone to failures, so replacements are necessary to maintain efficiency and prevent disruptions. Upcoming system upgrades such as transitioning from Windows 10 before its end of life require substantial planning and resources. Ensuring compliance with evolving standards is essential for smooth operations. To enhance safety and security at City Hall, additional measures are necessary include installing updated security systems. These upgrades are crucial to protect employees and visitors. An intern is also needed to help with the volume of tasks related to hardware and software updates. Additionally, a contingency is included in the budget to accommodate unforeseen issues or costs. The cost of the budget overage and 10% contingency is $250,000. This request has been reviewed and approved by the Finance Department to allocate the funds from the General Fund. I move to allow the IT Department to purchase equipment to replace outdated devices, upgrade and enhance security, and hire an intern for the tasks required. Amend the 2025 budget for the IT Department for $250,000. I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for Carrie?
Carrie, I have a few questions and comments. As the Commissioners and others probably are aware too, that we went for a short time here with not having a full-time IT staff, so that the backlog is understandable to get caught up here. Would you say a lot of these updates are both hardware and software, Windows-related, and potentially we're at, we're at the mercy of Microsoft's end-of-life and the support timelines, I guess, on a lot of these pieces?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner, yes, that is true. We are at the mercy of Microsoft. They have end-of-life on Windows, and if you do not, you know, update your devices for end-of-life, then they aren't supported, they're not given security patches and that type of thing. So we definitely want to be ahead of the game and make sure that we're taking care of that. But also, hardware is end-of-life. So if you buy a computer or a server, the manufacturer has a date of when they feel that that device should be replaced. So certain devices have, you know, a timeline set that you'll want to get those replaced as well.
Average timeframe that we are keeping, the computers, timeframe in our fleet, is, keep those for a few years, I would imagine?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner, yes. What we would normally do is a laptop we'd want to replace probably after a three-year timeframe. Just because it's mobile, can get dropped, it's getting put in bags and things like that. It's just a little bit easier to have problems with it. A desktop, we can leave in place for approximately five years, and then after those timeframes, they should be replaced.
Very good. We've had a few conversations of, on my understanding, that we're going to a more modern workplace with utilizing more laptops, like you said, with docking stations and monitors versus having a mix of laptops and desktops. So even though some of this does cost a little bit upfront, long-term, more adaptable, and the long-term savings of now having to license multiple products for city employees could, you know, we could realize that later on, but upfront, there's some upfront costs.
Correct. Mayor Freilich, Commissioner, that is correct. A lot of employees at the city have two devices, a desktop and then a mobile device of some kind, you know, whether that's a laptop or an iPad. Getting people to use one device versus two will help save money, and, you know, yes, it's an upfront cost, but eventually, you know, we won't be having to license two devices. We won't be having to replace two devices, and then easier also for the end user to only have one device.
Very good. A final comment, I guess, with, there's been a lot of discussion about City Hall, potential improvements to the long-term plan to update this building potentially. I just want the Commission to know that Carrie and I are looking at pieces that are built for the future and not something that is outdated by the time we put it in place. Also, pieces that are user-friendly for our staff and for the public when they show up to City Hall, to be able to be, we can be accessible through, through updated products there. We want something that's adaptable to the improvements that we make in this building, and that we're investing forwards, not backwards, for the future, so. Thank you, Carrie.
Mayor, Carrie, do you have a plan for rotational purchasing? In other words, where you don't purchase everything at once, that you're, it's incremental due to the fact that it's a lot easier on a budget to do it that way, and you're able to isolate which is a priority, and then go from there and make it rotational?
Yes, Mayor Freilich, Commissioner, that is true. I did go through the entire computer inventory and determined which ones were the priority that needed to be replaced right away. They were labeled, and I know, you know, the year of the device that's out there, so I am replacing those that are the critical priority ones first, and doing, you know, others the following year. They are all on a timeline already.
And it's a lot easier for a budget to have a plan like that, as opposed to one year where you got to purchase everything, and you're competing with other purchasing, and it just makes more business sense to do it that way.
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner, that is correct, and, yeah, replacing everybody's computer in one year would not be very easy, so, on me, and then also the staff, I'm sure, but, yeah, that would be a lot of work trying to do it all in one year, so, yeah, splitting it up amongst five years was, is what my plan is.
Yeah, well, you have your tasks ahead of you, and you're starting on good, so we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Carrie? Carrie, we're upgrading our security cameras, correct?
Mayor Freilich, that is correct. Here at City Hall, we would be replacing the existing indoor cameras, and then we would be adding outdoor cameras to help with outside traffic.
So higher resolution and color?
Yes, Mayor Freilich, that is correct. The cameras would be very high resolution. We would be able to zoom in if needed, you know, if we, if a visitor came into the building and we wanted to, you know, get closer view of their face, this technology would allow us to do that.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I'll make a motion to consider the 2025 Budget Amendment for, excuse me, for Information Technology.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinzchen, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes, thank you, Carrie. Item number three, consider a 2025 Budget Amendment for interim improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Jerick.
Mayor and Commissioners, we have been working through our wastewater treatment plant master plan with AE2S over the last year, year and a half. Out of this plan, and with discussions happening related to long-range financial planning, some needs at the wastewater treatment plant that need to happen sooner than a larger project have kind of bubbled up to the surface. We worked with AE2S to scope that out, and they identified clarifier controller units and some electrical upgrades that would need to take place at the plant to kind of carry it along until that, what we were kind of anticipating as maybe a 2029 construction project down the line. The overall cost of the projected improvements is about $215,000. Of this $215,000, we are expecting about 50,000 to 60,000 of that to be reusable for the larger overall project. This improvement would prevent disruptions that have happened at the wastewater treatment plant recently. The control, the existing controller unit has gone down and has basically been wiped several times over the last couple of years, which results in very costly and very disruptive events for the wastewater treatment plant staff. I have Ryan from the wastewater treatment plant here, as well as Zach Ranastate from AE2S, to help answer any questions, but I would, our motion, our request would be to amend wastewater treatment plant's 2025 capital outlay budget to make these improvements, and it's our recommendation to approve.
Any questions for Jerick?
Mayor, Jerick, my question has to do with the operation of the plant. Is the plant remotely operated via internet, or is there, in other words, is there a possibility that, you hear about this critical water system and things like that, utility systems can be hacked, cut off, things like that, because they're so dependent on the remote digital internet process, way of doing it, versus, you know, the old-fashioned way of turning electricity off and on?
I might have to defer to Ryan on, is it internet-controlled?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner, the internet doesn't control the plant, but you can access the main control system through the internet. Like, when Trent from AE2S works on it, he can do it remotely. He'll, he'll log in from his laptop, and that's how he works on it, so. You could, a hacker could get in there, yeah.
So it is remote, there is remote access.
Yeah, I can get to it.
To do that, okay, which, you know, I'm always a little skeptical of that fallibility of those systems like that.
Yeah, it's a scary thought with...
But that's the way, you know, that's the way things are right now, but there's a fallibility to that.
Yeah, it's also nice to be able to do it from my phone. Some of the glitches that happen in the middle of the night, I can fix from my phone sometimes, and they'll call me, and so, yeah, it's a double-edged sword, I guess.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions, or...
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep.
Jerick, we're putting a Band-Aid on this, right?
This is a Band-Aid, yes, Mayor Freilich.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
From the server standpoint, I like seeing that there is some redundancy built into. You don't want to put all your eggs in one basket, so I appreciate that that was built into there. I would make a motion to consider the 2025 Budget Amendment for interim improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinzchen, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners, Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number four, consider authorizing staff to advertise for water treatment plant Phase 3 optimization bids. Jerick.
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, this is related to our Water Treatment Plant Phase 3 Optimization Project again. I do have kind of a map of the improvements, since this project is a little bit hard to visualize sometimes. This graphic kind of shows some of the improvements that are being made at the plant. It's a, it's a collection of chemical feed and electrical improvements at the plant. I don't know if I've ever seen it visualized this way, and I thought it was very helpful, so I thought I'd share that with you. The item that I have for you today is the request to advertise for bids. We're at a point where we are wrapping up final design for the project, and we'll be ready, ready for bid. As I stated earlier, it's about a $12.5 million project, and we have 60% cost share on the pre-construction portion of this project, and we're expecting to receive a 60% cost share on the construction portion as well. It's my recommendation to approve the authorization to advertise for bids, but I can answer any questions if you have any.
When was the last time any of this was upgraded?
I would have to defer to Tyler on that. Do you know the age of the equipment that's being replaced generally? 1980s, yeah, 40, 45 years?
And the plant was built in what year? Got to be, judging by the green paint inside...
I think, I think there are, there are 1920s.
1920s?
Sections of the plant that exist. There's concrete, I know, that Dwayne had said was from the 1920s, so I believe that, that would be a good guess.
Okay, so it's 40 years since we've upgraded these items?
These pieces.
These pieces?
Yep.
Yeah. Is there security involved also?
In this portion?
Security? Improvements?
Nope, there would not be any security improvements associated with this project.
Okay. Any further questions?
I move to approve the authorization for advertising for bids for the water treatment, waste, as you were, water treatment plant Phase 3 Optimization Project.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number five, consider raw water intake project change orders. Jerick.
Mayor and Commissioners, we're kind of approaching the end of our raw water intake improvement project. The change orders that I have before you today, it's a change order for our general contract with Swanburg and a change order with our electrical contact, contract with YES. Both of these change orders would be, would be an adjustment due to delay, and it would be an adjustment to the contract time in, due to the delay of abandoning a 16-inch Marathon transmission line. Just in being a project partner and coordinating with Marathon, we're trying to match up timelines, and the abandonment of that particular 16-inch line just hasn't, hasn't worked out, worked on the schedule that we've been working on so far. So this would just be the, represent the time and, the time and effort related to that Lath is here from AE2S, and he might be able to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, we're recommending approving the change orders as presented.
Jerick, what does abandonment mean?
Abandonment would be, I'd imagine, switching over to a new, to new infrastructure, but I might ask Lath to come and expand on that.
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Braun, the older intake had a line that went up to the Marathon refinery, and they were basically capping it on both... the Marathon refinery, and they're basically capping it on both ends and abandoning the pipe in place, since the refinery is currently served with the new intake.
That just, you just cap it, you don't fill it in, or any, anything like that?
In this particular case, we're just capping it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Jerick?
So the, the project's scope hasn't changed, it's basically because it's been a delay in the timeline of coordinating schedules and more time allocated from, from our side, but also from the, the subs that are part of this.
Mayor, Commissioner, that's correct, yeah. There are costs associated to, yeah, to carrying it out, further costs for the contractors, crew availability, them being able to schedule out other projects when they think they would, they were going to have time based on the end date of their contract with us. So there's just costs that the, that the contractors incur related to these, to these delays.
I entertain a motion.
I move to approve change, change orders G dash oh eight and E dash oh nine as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rohr, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Rohr.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Frelick.
Yes. Item number six, consider an extension of the zoning moratorium. Andrew?
Good evening, Mayor Frelick and Commissioners. I'm here tonight to request an extension of a moratorium that we currently have in place. About a year ago, ordinance 1442 was approved by the City Commission, which did place a temporary moratorium on the development of certain use, self-storage developments. I have a copy of that in your packet for your review. The request is to extend it. The original expiration date was set based on a previously set kind of project completion for our zoning ordinance study. The Planning Department did not complete that project in 2024. We will be completing it with a new end date of May 31st is our contract expiration. The rationale for the moratorium are kind of expanded upon in the background and requests on my agenda doc, but largely speaking, current zoning regulations that we have in place, we do not feel adequately address this land use and the impact that it has on surrounding developments, particularly relative to the commercial viability and commercial growth and expansion of our community. I can say that self-storage will be allowed in Mandan in different areas upon completion of the project as currently drafted. However, under the current regulations, they're not quite exactly where we feel like they need to be, specific to the impacts and, and relative opportunities that commercial areas in the community have. So the, the request is for your consideration of this this evening. I would need to return at future meetings to actually place the ordinance. I just wanted to get your appetite on if, if you support the Planning Department doing this, and if so, the recommendation is, of course, to provide that authorization, and I would return at future meetings with the ordinance. Do you have any questions for me?
Mayor and Commissioners, Andrew, do we have people out there waiting on projects that deal with this moratorium?
Mayor Frelick, Commissioner Braun, I do not believe there are any applicants. Going back to roughly a year ago, the City Commission did make a specific accommodation and set the, the effective period of this moratorium out so that we could approve a project that has not started construction yet. So an entire construction season went by without that project being built, and at this point, I am not aware of any folks who are seeking to construct self-storage.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Andrew?
I have a question, but I want to ask the question after we have the motion here.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to direct staff to add the moratorium extension to the February 18th City Commission agenda for first consideration.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Did you want to?
You finish this here.
Mayor Frelick, I believe there's going to be further discussion. It should happen prior to the vote.
Okay, well, the question, it may be, well, it's indirectly related, but at the meeting that we attend, there was a economist there, and he was talking about housing and, and different things, and he was talking about how in many areas of city regulations or other regulations that added a lot to the, the cost of a house, and these regulations and requirements and zoning things may not be directly to the safety and, and specifically the concerns of that versus more of a bureaucratic approach. Are we pretty across the board in how we do that? In other words, are, we don't have excessive regulations, or we, do we do business in a manner that adds a lot to the builders, or have we ever looked at that, or do you feel that we're not in that position?
Mayor Frelick, Commissioner Rohr, great question. Overall, I feel that the City of Mandan's development regulations are generally within the middle of the road, if not a little bit more flexible and a little bit more accommodative to private property ownership and land development interests. Zoning is based on adopted plans, and our ordinance update study is based on the adopted plan of the city. We do feel it is in the best interest of the city and the folks that have contributed to its plans to address certain development types through this project, and therefore, getting into this topic is kind of based in the adopted plans that we have for the city. I, I guess in closing short, I don't feel that the standards that we have today are adequate. I feel that they are far inferior to the standard across peer communities in North Dakota. I also feel that the proposed standards are pretty reasonable and by no means will make us the most restrictive communities to develop in.
Okay, something you need to look at. Okay, thank you for the reply there.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Braun.
Braun.
Second by Commissioner Heinchan. No further discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Mayor Frelick.
Yes. Item number seven, legislative updates. Mr. Dubauer.
Mayor Frelick and Commissioners, there have been over, I think, a thousand bills introduced into the legislative session this year. That is a little above, I think, the last time, but I think a North Dakota Supreme Court decision that kind of limited the scope of what bills can contain, maybe cause an increase in the number of bills so that they're supposedly on kind of same topic, so you don't get a bunch, one bill with a whole bunch of stuff wrapped into it. So, again, a whole lot of bills. Several homestead tax credit bills and definitions of primary residences are being tracked by our assessor and their assessing group. Excuse me. The, the hot topic seems to be property tax caps in many different fashions, whether it's a cap on the valuation of what your property value may go up from year to year, or a cap on the number of mills that can be levied, or a cap on the revenue that can be generated through the mill levy, or a cap on the amount of expenses that you can have related to your budget. So, a lot of those different things are still being hashed out, and I don't have, I think the, the word would be that there will be caps of some sort coming through this session, what those end up being. Still a lot of debate on those things. And so we're tracking those very closely. There was a bill that also would cap, I think, your local sales tax at, I think, 3%. That was defeated by the House a, a few days ago. There are, one of the bills that was considered a few days ago, last week, was, you know, not necessarily a, it was kind of like a complete redo of how property taxes are generated, not necessarily based on the value of your property, but based on the square footage of your property, along with what are the square footages of your house, what might be the square footage of your garage or an outbuilding on your property, and that would be how you compute what your property tax bill would be. I think that one is still, I don't know that it got a, a real warm reception by the House Finance and Tax Committee, but it is still out there and has not been voted out and passed to the full House. So again, a lot of different bills coming in. The, again, there was a bill on sales tax limitations would cap, I think, a local community's ability to raise sales tax at a cap of 3%. I think that was defeated by the House a few days ago. One of the, on a positive note, House Bill 1577, which we supplied testimony in supportive in person and also in writing, would put a $50 million pot of money out there for assistance for wastewater treatment plants. We know that we have a significant project going on out at ours. This bill would in essence say, you could apply for a grant of $12.5 million, as long as it does not exceed, I think, 60% of your project. We think that's a good foot in the door. Typically, the state of North Dakota has not provided grant dollars for wastewater treatment plants. We can certainly take low-interest loans out for those improvements, but again, grant dollars are certainly more beneficial than dollars that need to be paid back. So, we continue to watch that, and like I said, that was on a positive note. Some bills relating to the use of drones and things like that, I think, was heard this afternoon. Not sure that that will have a successful fate either. We use, the police department does use the drones that we have in their operations and also to do many other projects for different departments within the city. So we want to continue to have that ability to do that. And that's kind of a really quick overview of some of the bills that we are tracking. As always, if you have questions on any bills that you see, please let us know. We will provide you with an update. Also, the North Dakota Legislative Council's website is very robust. You can watch hearings, you can watch them three days after they happen. They can, you can see what the current action on those bills are. So again, if you have any questions, we'll certainly do our best to respond to those as we, as we can.
Mayor Jim, can legislature still piggyback, in other words, they have a bill they don't think will pass, say, they put a popular bill and they piggyback the bills to get the unpopular one passed? Is that technique still being used in the making of bills?
Mayor Frelick and Commissioner Rohr, I would assume that is still a possibility. There's bills that sometimes you call them getting hog-housed, where there's a bill number, it's introduced, but at the end of the day, entirety of that bill is wiped clean, and you have a new bill that's put in there. I think that's sometimes a negotiation that happens among legislators, that some people will want a piece of legislation in a bill that they know is popular and may get passed, so they'll try and, you know, engage that bill with other items. They may not be as popular to get it passed. So, I think that still, still happens to some extent, but that would be a good question for our local delegation to answer.
It's definitely something to be watched, because it's, it can be a little, to me, a little unethical in how you make law and do things like that when, try to sneak something in that way. But, again, it depends on our own procedures and what they allow and don't allow.
Yep.
Any questions? Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Jim.
All right, thank you.
We have no resolution in ordinances. Is there any other business to come before the Board? Seeing none. Future meeting dates for the Board of City Commissioners. Tuesday, February 11th at 5:30. That will be a special meeting, a working session. Tuesday, February 18th at 5:00 is our regular meeting. Tuesday, February 25th at 5:30 is a special meeting, working session. Tuesday, March 4th at 5:30, regular meeting. Tuesday, March 11th at 5:30 will be a special meeting, working session. And Tuesday, March 18th, close to spring, at 5:30, regular meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.